Inside this channel letter cumulatively, it's not going to crank out more than eight hundred lumens.
Is there a way to measure lumens? Is there like a device that you that you can use?
What I was trying to avoid, quite honestly, I think I said that early on is I don't just hoping not to have to buy a light heater. Then an accurate one and then have to learn how to use it and then get up on a ladder and hold the thing six feet away or whatever the standards are and do all that.
Right.
I was hoping we could get to a standard where we could say that it can't be more than X amount of output without having to go through the whole process of.
Right, that I mean, that is.
The dark and then. We haven't done that yet, so this would be the first one and then.
Yeah, I I mean, I I agree, that seems un. That it would be a real challenge um to to measure. Including because you would also be you would have other light coming at it, so it would be hard to pick that up individually. Um, okay, do we have any other questions or comments for about?
No, just sort of the same one on as far as the color temperature was twenty seven hundred, you were just comfortable with that based on the drawing or did you have something you compared it to like you did the eight hundred lumens?
Think we came up with seven hundred independently because again, I had this available last time, but I forgot to.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, so I think we went off of maybe me saying it's twenty seven hundred and that's sort of the what you've agreed to, at least generally at that time, I don't know if this provides you any leeway. To go beyond twenty seven hundred to a higher number or not.
Was was one of the seems like maybe one of the examples that of of other ordinances maybe had twenty seven hundred in it.
That could be.
That might be.
And then you said uh. Frankie hasn't looked at the, I mean, I'm sort of in a. At a at a place where I'm I'm fine with it, we approved this, but then again, why bother and if he's. He's not gonna pursue this or if he can't get this information to see if his sign even matches. Do we take it any further?
I suspect because there was a request that we need to provide the answer of either no, we're not going to allow canopy signs. Or if we're going to allow it, we're going to allow it according to this and without his input, we don't know if it will meet. But the last comment I had, which has been quite a while from Lee Taylor, Lee said, well, we'll make it work now, this is within the ballpark. This is actually more than they initially thought they might be able to do, so they would make sure that the sign company made it work within our parameters that we have or will adopt.
Okay, that makes me feel better, thank you.
That has been a while ago and and of course, the applicant received this packet at the same time that you did, just haven't heard any feedback since then.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, well, I'm assuming that we do not have an applicant statement since. Mr. Ben and Casa is not here, do we have any public comment on this issue? I will open the floor to public comment and um, the public is shaking their head, no. So so I will close public comment um and open up commission discussion and um and potentially a decision. So comments, thoughts, concerns? On where we have ended up with both the um description on page six and. The tables.
I'll make one comment, just that I did check with council because originally they had said white lights only, they were fine with. Color lights because of what we talked about, the Airbnb, we'll review it.
Okay. Anything else?
Looks good.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I think it also looks good with a couple of little things. In this table and and I sent some comments to Arnie and and we're going to postpone most of the things that I was um concerned about, which were about consistency of um. Language, um, but I do think with in in the line under C one. So this is the C one table um under internally illuminated, it would be good for. The number to say not permitted except one neon window sign and then in the area to have that not more than three square feet. Rather than having the not more than three square feet under the number.
Okay.
And then under next or and then the next line and one canopy sign, it could just say see above for canopy signs.
Where is that?
Um, same 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 items under internally illuminated, it says one canopy sign and um in the table, same table. Where it says N A, that would be where you would have no more than three square feet and then right below that it would see say see above for canopy signs. Does that make sense?
Proud of them having it all under number, putting it in the correct categories.
Putting it in the correct categories. Yep. And then we've got a whole, there there were just a whole bunch of other things that that uh. We're going to put off until the zoning text amendments. For both of the tables.
Just consistency type.
Yeah, consistency, you know, using using the same wording or let or or abbreviations and making sure that it makes sense. And any anybody else? So then do we need a, what do you need? Do we have some?
I don't think I provided you with a sample.
Can I ask you one more question, Arnie? You you were saying on the definition of canopy sign. We taken out fueling station, are we going to allow them but not lit?
He is the only one that comes out. So my understanding is that you would still want to keep a canopy sign cannot be attached to an awning vehicle fueling station. Sorry, vehicle fueling station canopy or pitched roof structure because again, we're trying to not allow this type of sign. On the stop end, which is that really odd sort of roof structure.
Right, and is it even flat, but like the farmers co-op. It may, I thought on farmers co-op, it looks fine as long as it's not lit and sheets kind has the same thing, they have their sign on their canopy, but it's not lit.
Sheets has internally illuminated one, so that that's fine and the one, maybe I'm not understanding your comment about the co-op because those are just letters. Those aren't, that would be a a wall sign, those aren't.
It's not considered a canopy.
Letters that are on top of which is what the canopy sign is.
That's what I want.
More like a warning sign.
So then does it need to, because this says a sign placed directly on or attached to the surface. Or top, so the, does that actually need to say on the top?
Yeah, I think that would be helpful, yes.
Yeah.
So attached and will remove to the surface or.
Okay.
So a sign placed directly on or attached. To the top of a canopy.
Still need to to the top of the canopy.
To the top, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, that's helpful.
And so these, the the uh, so the roughage farmers co-op as an example, that's allowed as. Where where is that specifically?
We are going to allow that in a um wall sign.
Okay, so that's a wall sign.
It's not a canopy sign again is the thing that we've just further defined, but it sits on top of.
Right.
It's going to that individual letter, channel letter that's going to be attached to or sit on top of.
Okay, so then a wall sign, one per business per street frontage, fifteen square feet. Per street frontage, but that'll get added later um and then. In the C two, which is this one, right, the farmers, I mean, the farmers co-op is C two. One square foot for each linear um foot of building frontage. With a thirty two square foot minimum and a hundred square foot maximum. I just want to make sure that we're, does, in my understanding that thirty two square feet, you have a minimum of thirty two square feet.
We'll use the Taqueria Jalisco as an example, that only had nineteen feet. Linear footage, so we can't limit it, so we boosted that up to a minimum, so even if you have less than the thirty thirty two feet of linear frontage, you can still have a thirty two square foot wall sign.
Ah, so this is thirty two, so when when you say with thirty two square feet minimum and a hundred square feet maximum, that's not the sign. That's not the area of the sign, that's the how many linear feet, is that correct?
Uh, I think I've confused myself or I'm not understanding the question, so in the. C two zoning district, you can display no greater than two square feet per sign per business frontage total. So I said one per one, but actually it's two per one in C two, so I may have misled you earlier, but the wall sign is what you're asking about, correct?
I'm asking about the wall sign and it says one square foot. For each linear.
Mm hmm, okay, so yeah, that's correct, so this, what I just read is the two square feet, that's the overall thing that just gives you the overall number that you cannot go over. But yes, you're right, that's one square foot per this board display area for each linear foot of building frontage. But if you do not have thirty two square feet, you still get at least a thirty two square foot um minimum wall size.
Okay, but this thirty two square feet, what is that referring to?
The square footage of the display area for the wall sign is the area.
I see, so one square foot, so I I got you, thank you. All right, so so. So we're still allowing, I just want to make sure that we're still allowing this, that that the language still. Will allow this since since we want this kind of sign is acceptable, correct? So we're good.
And perhaps if I could just point out one thing, I think that you benched it, but if we go back to the C one. Um, in the number, one per building has greater than forty feet of street frontage. So that's a further limitation that we haven't really talked about for a while, but we measured all the buildings that have canopies and then we came up with a minimum frontage of forty feet. So that's a further limiting factor in the C one zoning district.
And I'm sorry, that's for wall signs?
That's canopy signs.
Canopy, okay, great, yeah, thank you. Great. All right, any other? Comments? Questions?
A wee typo on page seven, under existing language, size standards should be sign standards. Message. Minor.
That's probably in our, that's probably in our whole code. Thank you.
Sorry, where was that? Sorry, what was that?
H seven.
H seven. So is that going to get changed anyway then? Okay.
That's, yeah, that's just.
Okay. All right, um, then I, if we are all in agreement that we're good to go. Um, Arnie has suggested language on page ten.
Can I ask a question about this? So this group voted once before on this motion and we voted to deny.
Correct.
The city council uh voted unanimously to approve, ours was a recommendation, theirs was an approval. They directed us to consider lumens and and Kelvins and such such and colors and such things. Um, do we need in our motion that we are voting on to tonight, do we need to say that we are now approving? This or should it we just be saying that we? I'm not sure how to put it, but we're just dealing with these these technicalities.
Well, one thing that we have done in the past is we have, we have had a motion that says we move to deny. But if city council chooses to go ahead with it, then we make these recommendations. And that's one way that we could sort of reiterate that if that was the feeling on the planning commission. Um, that that we're still saying, yeah, we really don't think this is the best thing to do. But if we're going to go ahead and do it anyway, then we would recommend these changes, so that's. That would, I mean, that's something that we have done in the past.
I think we've, I'm glad you asked the question because I think this is sort of reminded me that we had this discussion maybe a couple of means ago, how to phrase this particular. Motion, um, some, I believe at that time was more um to the effect that. In not, I'm going to say perhaps not the best way, but in spite of our denial, the first round, this came back to us from city council and we're now recommending the following standards.
Right.
Just sort of incorporate that idea that it did come to you initially and you weren't in favor of it.
I wasn't here for that meeting, but I did listen to it, so and I for what I recall is it was sort of mixed on the reason, a couple of people were for it, but some of the people who were against it. Some didn't like it, didn't think it was appropriate, but some thought, I don't want to spend the time on it right now. So is it worth, if we want to include that, yeah, I guess it's worth, it's definitely worth discussing, right?
Shannon, I think, put the um, put the language to it the best at the that meeting where we voted to deny. When she said that this city had gone to great lengths some time ago to eliminate this this sort of signage downtown and and. I guess I just wonder what's changed. And and maybe maybe minds have changed, we've got certainly gone over this a lot.
Yeah.
I personally have not changed.
So so I I mean. I think that what what probably changed is that that city council has has made a a decision.
Right.
Um. So I guess I would suggest that at at the very least, we should use Arnie's language of, you know, that we denied this originally. But um, but we were directed to by city council to um to deal with, I I'm not sure exactly. Yeah, standards and 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 therefore we propose these following. Or we propose the um, the zoning ordinance amendment. I'm not, do we have to have the the exact language in it or just? As presented is is enough? That's okay.
As presented or as amended because you did make some amendments to what you have in your packet, um, but yes, you could do it that way.
So that that's what I, I mean, I I think it's probably not a bad idea to to reiterate that that that's that that was the sort of the the. The step by step. And and um. I I mean, I suppose. We don't really have, I don't think we have a choice to now deny it or or to say we don't recommend this, I mean, we can say that, I guess.
You can individually do that in your in your vote, certainly, but this did come back, it is going to be approved, it hasn't been approved yet, but it's going to be approved by council, they were just hoping for your. Um thoroughness to improve the standards that came to them, so it will be approved and if you could, if you need to add something to the motion about your initial. Um, initially not being in favor of it, that's perfectly fine, but I would certainly hope that there isn't going to be unanimous denial of this after all the work that you put into it.
If if we do want to do that, is it possible to do it in two motions? I've been for it. So I don't want to vote against it, so if we do this, can we do it in a way that doesn't require me to vote for?
The way Arnie has worded it is is um accurate.
Yeah.
And does not require us to revote on on this motion.
Can I hear, so you mean the wording that we have here?
No.
No.
The wording that you gave verbally.
I was just trying to find what meeting we uh.
Oh, gosh.
Which what the date was of the meeting where we denied it.
Oh, that goes all the way back until.
John, I I think that what the the idea is to say, although we denied at an earlier meeting, we were directed by council to.
Yeah.
Pick this back up and we have done that and and we are presenting these, you know, this back to. It's just, it's just reflecting that the act, what actually happened, so it's not, it's not saying that we are now denying again.
It's true, as long as it's not worded in a way that sounds like I'm against this, because I'm not going to vote for that.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, I think I think we've, that ship sailed.
Yeah, it has.
Yeah.
Has anyone changed their mind since the last?
Changed their mind about.
Whether they liked it or those who voted for it or are they now against it or those who were against it before but voting for it?
Um, I. Well, anybody else?
I have not. I'm I'm still opposed myself.
I was for it and I am for it.
And and I would say that I'm, I, based on what we have seen um and and. How many canopies it would apply to, I'm not, I don't have the same strong feeling against it. And particularly with the limitations on the brightness, um, so, yeah, so that's that's where I stand.
Yeah.
One, one of several bits.
Yeah. Okay. Then.
But I, but I still, I I mean, I still understand the, you know, the concern.
And I I think, I think if that's the case, I I think we should just keep the language as is. Is here, but then we might not have a unanimous vote and that's okay.
I wouldn't be able to vote for it.
Right.
Because um, because. I I wish, I would like, I would feel more comfortable if we with a with an amendment or a motion that does not. Revisit the vote, but just states a fact that on June twelve. This this commission recommended denial.
And that.
And that, yeah, right.
And that council.
Right.
Um, sent it back to us, uh, maybe even saying after their unanimous.
Approval.
Approval, that they sent it back to us for um. For more more detailed um. Standards. And that, and that we are moving to. Approve the following standards, can we, could we say that? For internally lit signs, Arnie?
Can I try something out?
Yeah, please, please.
First, I was thinking, but this depends on what side you were initially on, but first I was thinking, while not initially in favor of a canopy signs. Per direction from city council and the amended standards developed for canopy signs, I move to. But I'm going to change that a little bit and now taking the on June twelve, the planning commission was not in favor of canopy signs. However, per direction from city council and with the amended standards developed herein, I move to. No.
The only thing, yeah, I I guess. It it sounds sort of like we're four to two right now in favor of it and I I hate to. I like it now and I think part of it is because we've set standards and we're not going to get. Something, anything too crazy, so I sort of just feel like just vote, but if you're still against it, there's no problem with voting against it, even though council told us to come back and visit.
I I would like to vote for these standards.
Yeah.
But I can't vote that I that I uh would recommend approval of this type of sign.
We could, we could do what we did last time and say um. Uh. Is 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 directed by council. The vote. In favor of this is whatever and we can take a vote. But if, but if council wants to move forward with it, we unanimously recommend these standards. Does that make any better or?
Except that council's already spoken.
Right.
Council unanimously voted in favor of this, so why are we even doing a recommendation again?
So, right, do we have to have a motion here or can we just send recommendations to council?
I might be splitting hairs, but they haven't approved it, they have signaled support of it by sending it back to you. And asking for more work to be done to improve the product.
And for that reason, I think our vote is still important.
Because I think that you are likely at a four to two, that there's a majority for the standards that have been developed. I would recommend if you so desire for one of the four to make that motion and see where it lands and if folks are still opposed to it, then they can certainly um express that in their vote.
I think it'll be a shame, shame to vote no when when I.
Yeah.
When I feel in favor of the standards.
It would be nice to word it in a way that that.
That we could.
That you feel, yeah, that that we could recommend them. Yeah, we did. Um, Mary Stewart, do you, are you feeling the same way that you would want to vote in favor of these standards? Even given where your your overall position on illuminated signs?
I would, I would um. Endorse these standards, endorse these um revisions, I guess, or the or the tightening of the of the um guidelines and. Still not in favor of the signs.
Okay.
So let's take two votes, yeah.
So 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 we need some language that is going to allow us to. Um. Hmm. So the way the motion is written is um. Approve to allow internally illuminated canopy signs. Um. But it sounds like that's, it's that language right there. That is the problem, um, could we say? Um. Approve.
Just say.
The following standards for intern internally illuminated signs or the, you know.
How about something to the effect, I move to approve the standards developed by the planning commission over the last four meetings for canopy signs?
Yep.
That would work. All right, so can you say that again for whoever wants to, whoever wants to make this a motion, please write it down. Or or or, yeah.
I'll offer this again, I move to approve the standards developed by the planning commission over the last four meetings for canopy signs.
For internally illuminated canopy signs. Just to be explicit.
Okay, I, are we, can I make a motion? Do we want, does everybody, do we like this?
Does that work?
You like this? Uh, I move to approve the standards designed by the planning commission over the last four meetings. With respect to internally illuminated canopy signs.
In.
I think in C one and C two.
In C one and C two zoning districts.
Do we need, do we need the as presented?
As presented? You want me to try that again?
Yeah.
The problem is that my handwriting, I'm not sure, okay.
The whole thing, yeah, the COA twenty twenty five dash oh three.
We need that too, right, so, oh, but that's, but that's.
But that's not what we're.
Like what the desire is, I think we're just trying to get to the standard.
Standard, we're just doing the standards.
Okay, then that's fine, then take that out.
And is that going to be, and is this to be, going to be sufficient to allow city council to move forward, it is and it resolves, and we're all on the same page about it and stated this way?
What if, what if we say with reference to Z O A twenty twenty five dash oh three? The the uh, I approve the standards developed over the last four meetings. With regards to zoning ordinance amendment twenty twenty five dash oh three for internally illuminated canopy signs, does that make?
Yeah.
That way you're referencing the, just so that it's super clear.
Okay, should we try it? Yeah, yeah, can we, can we reel it back in if I get it wrong? Okay, okay, I'm going to try it like this, with respect to zoning ordinance amendment Z O A twenty twenty five oh three. I move to approve the design standards designed by the planning commission. Over the last four meetings with respect to internally illuminated. Canopy signs as presented.
In.
In C one and C two districts.
And do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you all so much for all of your thoughts and work on this particular issue, it is. I think it was important, it it may have felt frustrating at times, but I think we we powered through, so. Thank you, um, okay, moving on to item B, CPA twenty twenty five dash oh one, the comprehensive plan review. Um, for both green infrastructure and community facilities, um, Arnie, do you have a staff report?
Oh, yeah, I have announcement perhaps and for both B and C, again, that's for the. And for both B and C, again, that's for the green infrastructure chapter and the community facilities chapters that we had hoped to be reviewing this evening. Our PDC staff had a technical issue where they lost those files due to a computer issue and they were not able to recreate those on short order in, for this meeting tonight. We expect those in the next few days. We'll get those out to you. If we could ask that you take some time to review those, get your written comments. If you have written comments, if you could get those back to Jeremy and myself, that way we could go ahead and then have something prepared for you at the next meeting. So as long as we have enough time to get it into the packet, then you might have a more cohesive thing that's already been at least initially reviewed. And then we can work on a little bit more on just sort of the substantive things during that next meeting.
That would be ideal. All right, thank you. So that makes us get to move along to other business. Do you have a zoning and planning report?
I do. The first item is that the ARB has been discussing for at least the last three meetings, as I recall, the historic resources chapter. After your initial review, we also presented that without your edits because we didn't have those immediately available. So the ARB is intent on making a number of suggestions and they haven't really fleshed that out completely. But I believe there's going to be a recommendation for strengthening what they're calling the zoning loophole. So in the residential district, not in the downtown historic district, but in the two residential districts that we have, the only thing that the ARB reviews is the construction or the building of a main building or accessory building, or the demolition of a main building or accessory building. So if you have a historic structure and you put on a 3,000 square foot, that's too much. 1,000 square foot addition, that doesn't go to the architectural review board. So they're going to ask for consideration to perhaps add that authority to their current, not guidelines, but their actual zoning language to allow them to have that review authority. And then also they have the desire, because as our buildings get older and older and it's a benefit and also it's a little bit of a hindrance. But if the residential historic districts in particular expand, and that does create an expense for us because each of those surveys, if you have an area or subdivision, a neighborhood, then you do have to pay for that. But we can find money through the certified local government status that we have for the grant for that type of work. But what, since our buildings are getting older, that gives the folks that live in those properties the ability to apply for historic tax credits. So it does provide that benefit. While at the same time, yes, you have to go in front of the ARB if you're going to build a new building or not. And that currently is in only, not two small neighborhoods, but in our current district. So if that gets expanded, there is a benefit, but then there is also an overview authority there. So I think they're just going to put a recommendation forward to perhaps expand their authority either on property or in the text itself, if that makes sense.
And, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. I was going to say, being in the historic district, that does give you access for residential buildings to get historic tax credits?
I couldn't remember that, so I looked it up. It's both commercial and residential.
It is, okay, because I was talking to Karen Roundy and she was thinking it was.
Hers is a different thing though.
Okay.
I'm talking about, when I mentioned tax credits, that's state and federal historic preservation tax credits.
Okay.
I should remember, we have an expert. So not the local that we have that I'd forgotten about. But somebody brought up when we were in the last comp plan chapter, do we still locally do a tax credit or a tax abatement is the best way of putting it? For commercial and institutional properties? I checked with her and we still do that.
Okay, yeah, but then the.
That text, that's different though, what we do locally versus the historic preservation tax credits.
Okay, thank you.
And so, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I understand you correctly. They want, do they already have the ability, the power to expand these historic districts? Is that, that's what they're asking for?
They're going to ask for it in more a roundabout way, so that it's a little bit more generic. You know, expand the opportunities for preservation across the city. So that if there is a proposal to expand in this neighborhood.
I see.
Or to expand to add the oversight over additions in the residential districts, that at least there's a placeholder already in the comp plan.
All right, that sounds great.
And if we, if we give them, if we expand the historic district, that doesn't necessarily make them required to go through ARB approval though? Because right now we have that, right?
In the residential district?
Yeah.
Only for the building of a main structure or an accessory structure or the demolition of a main structure or accessory structure?
Okay.
Let's say we, let's say all of a sudden my neighborhood, because I'm not currently in my whole neighborhood, whatever that means.
Right.
Then if I wanted to build a shed, which currently I don't have to go to the ARB, I would have to go. But the benefit is if I wanted to do historic preservation tax credit, I would at least be in a district where I can go apply for tax credits for renovation project.
So, so from that, that's a perfect example. Not everybody views that as a favorable thing for that, for that exact reason.
We have had pushback in the past when there has been a request by ARB to expand, to add oversight over additions. There hasn't been that desire, at least expressed by some people, for that additional authority.
Okay.
But that's just, ARB is working on it. Just want to bring that forward to you in case it comes here. While we are still, I don't know the timing. Hopefully they'll be done and we'll have something for when it comes back to you and we start the public hearing process, once you have fully amended with all the chapters and we have a product that goes out to the public for comment.
Great. Thank you. Anything else?
One other thing is your priorities for 2025, I'm going to list them out. Were mini warehouse, entrance corridor, comp plan review, townhouses and plan development residential. And the reason I bring that up, we are finding in the city manager is also directing that plan development residential will jump to the top of the list. Clearly we've done mini warehouses, we're in the process of the comp plan review, but he's asking that before we get into an entrance corridor or townhouses, that we do the planned development residential. And just a quick overview, we had the planned development residential. That gave us flexibility in the residential districts. And we have projects or properties that aren't able to conform to the strict requirements that we have in the R1 and R2 zoning districts. And I'll think of a couple of examples in a minute. One is, and I can't remember the name of the road, but somebody wanted, had built a big house and they had two duplex or duplex up front and they got that approved through the planned development resident or the PUD at that time. And it's off of Borden Road and I can't think of the name of the side road. But as an example, so that came through the process. It was deemed to be acceptable. Yes, it's more density, it's in a different configuration, but it was deemed to be appropriate. So they were allowed to do that. So we're asking for, to bring that back to you instead of perhaps us doing what we've done with cottage housing or accessory dwelling units where we're crafting it from scratch. I'm planning on bringing back to you at the next meeting, your old PUD and we'll just call it the planned development residential as a starting point. And the reason that we need that is we're finding that that is perhaps the product that, that was the mechanism that was used for weather burn. And that's been successful and council is considering that as perhaps one of the development opportunities on the VDOT and Spotswood parcel. So they would like to have that flexibility back in case that is the type of product that they go out for. And that's putting a little bit on council, because the last time council said they're going to put them out and then see what sort of products people come in with as opposed to stating, this is the type of product we want. But I think the point is we would like to have that flexibility in case that is the type of product that a developer comes in with. Is that a fair statement?
Very, yes.
And, and just for my own clarity here, what's the difference between PUD and a PDR?
In R1 and R2, we have these very inflexible standards, minimum lot size, 8,000 square feet, front yard setback, side yard setback, rear yard. And if you look at weather burn, and I'm not going to be 100% accurate in this, in R1, we had at that point a 25-foot front yard setback. The PUD gives people the flexibility. I'm going to do something that doesn't meet the standards in R1 or R2, the very sort of strict traditional zoning standards. And I'm going to present something different, but I'm going to at least give you almost site plan quality design. So you're going to see how it all works together and I'm going to present that. And if you like it, then I get to do that. In weather burn, their front yard setbacks were reduced to 10 feet. And their side yard setbacks, I think, were five feet. So that was a significant reduction from R1 or even from R2, or especially from R2. But it was deemed as an overall unit of development to be cohesive and large enough also that it made sense.
Okay, so up till now, the PUDs are not even allowed?
Well, we, we did this transition, perhaps unfortunate or perhaps not, when we did in that overall update in 2016, 2017, where we transitioned it away from that and then ultimately went to that planned development. Then we thought, well, we need to have a product that would allow that mixed use development. So that's kind of how it transitioned. But now unfortunately, we're finding ourselves that we don't have that flexibility in the residential district to do something similar to weather burn, which still gives a product that's a single family detached, if that's what's desired, but in a much higher density than what's in my neighborhood or even a more suburban style neighborhood. So that'll be on your next agenda. It'll be perhaps just there for a quick overview and nothing else as we go through the chapters that we'll have on that agenda as well.
All right, we'll look forward to, to seeing that. All right, Leslie, do we have a city council report?
Yeah, we met last Thursday and we had a work session with the school board beforehand. In our meeting, we didn't really have anything planning related. There was this week, a housing forum that was very good that had a lot pertaining to, to planning as far as what we could do to help incentivize the creation of more housing. And one, you know, the main theme that we heard was that we have, we have to allow density. We have to, and make things maybe a little less prescriptive so that we can build housing because the cost of it has gone up so much. You can't afford to have, you know, workforce type housing unless they can add some density. So it'll be interesting when we go through the, the PDR, what we come up with and if we can address that. I had also gone, several of us had gone to the Virginia Municipal League Conference two weeks ago and we heard the same kind of comments at some of the different breakout sessions too, from, from builders. And that's all I have.
Great. All right, well then we are at the end of our agenda, so we have options here. But I'm waiting.
I move to adjourn.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and opposed, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.